Okay, good evening. We will, well, we've already called the meeting to order actually previously. We will end the recess and start with roll call. Note that all board members are present. But we definitely should do the pledge of allegiance first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heidi, please note that all board members are in attendance at this time. Board members, please note if you have a conflict of interest on any agenda or non-agenda items. Hearing none. We will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of consent agenda.
Motion by Moulton?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Heidi will now present the financial report.
Thank you, Stuart. In the general fund, we received the anticipated taxes along with the regular state aid payment in the amount of 1.4 million. Other state revenue of $763,000 was received and insisted of state apportionment and bank franchise tax. The ending cash position in the amount of just over 7 million is comparable to the previous year. In the capital outlay fund, we had revenue consistent of the typical February taxes in the amount of $268,000 and other revenue of scoreboard sponsorship payments in the amount of $15,000. The fund's ending cash position reflects an increase of 1 million over the previous year. Special education had revenue consisting of the typical property taxes and a monthly state aid payment totaling $379,000. The cash balance of 1.5 million in this fund is maintained over the prior two years. L A T C revenue included the tuition and fees related to the second semester in the amount of $679,000. State aid for the third quarter was received in the amount of $2.8 million. Federal funds in the amount of $317,000 was received and is related to the Perkins support. The ending cash position in this fund of 12.1 million reflects an increase when compared to the prior year. In the bookstore, the revenue was exceeded by expenditures in the amount of $62,000 for the month and the ending cash position in this fund of $668,000 is below that of the prior year. Comparison of this fund is difficult with the varying inventory levels. In the employee benefit trust, E V T, had claims in the amount of $832,000 and those exceeded premium for the month of February. The ending cash position of 3.7 million in this fund has declined from previous years and a premium increase is expected in the coming months to support the trust. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Hearing none. We've got our motion. We've got our second. All those in favor of the consent agenda.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The motion's been approved. We'll move to student staff recognition.
Yes, thank you. Just some updates on some staff recognition and hopefully we can get some of these folks in person. But in the past month, a big thank you to our activities supervisors and concessions workers. We're pretty much done with the winter season, so that's a lot of thankless nights above and beyond the school day. The concession ladies kept me well fed this winter, so I appreciate that. Our wrestling team finished runner-up in the state duels and we have a boys' basketball team going to state tournament this week, so that's a big deal this week down in Sioux Falls. And then, an update. So, I updated the board earlier this year that we had a national merit scholarship semifinalist who has now, I'll just read, that Lauren Geyer has advanced to finalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Program of 2024 by demonstrating through distinguished performance, high potential for future academic achievement. So that's a pretty big deal. She has now advanced to the finalist round, so excited about that. We did name our certified and classified staff members of the year. Erin McBurney, a middle school social studies teacher, is our certified staff member of the year. And Jamie Schock, who is an admin assistant at Roosevelt Elementary, is our classified staff member of the year. And then one last big award in the last month. Big congratulations to Donna Ireland, who is a paraprofessional over at Roosevelt Elementary. We had a ceremony for Donna because she was named the S D E A Education Support Professional of the Year for the state of South Dakota, so a big shout-out to Donna Ireland, so.
Congrats to all. Thank you. All right, we will move to public input on any agenda or non-agenda items. Now would be the time to come forth if anybody has anything. Don't see anybody, so we'll move to item 3.2 with the legislative update. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I will share just a couple of updates with you. With the legislative season drawing to a close, last week we have all the final numbers and policy that will be working into play in this next fiscal year. And really appreciate the legislature's continued investment in technical education. Closing out legislative session this year, First Veto Day is coming up at the end of the month and that'll be the final day for approval of everything and make sure it stands. But as of right now, the legislature provided an additional 4% inflation to our state aid funding that comes to us through quarterly payments. Heidi mentioned those quarterly payments in the financial update just a moment ago. They also continued their priority on affordability for students at the technical colleges in South Dakota. So gave across the system an additional $1.38 million that will allow us to freeze both state and local tuition and fees for school year 2425. So that's a huge step in favor of students. It's actually the third year in a row that the legislature has frozen tuition and fees and we really appreciate their work to prioritize that students can go to college at the least price possible. That also means that in that prioritization, that all staff and faculty within the tech college system will receive a 4% increase to salary for next fiscal year. They also approved additional maintenance and repair funding for state-owned facilities and granted one-time funds of $4.8 million across the system for additional equipment. This group recognizes, appreciates how important quality, up-to-date equipment is within our programs and our instructional practices and just appreciate that the state continues to make those investments to make sure South Dakota students are cutting-edge in what they know and are able to do. We're anticipating that Lake Area Tech, between the state funding and the required match to go with that, will invest about $2.4 million more dollars into equipment next school year. So those are the highlights and the big actions from the legislature, all in good favor of our students, our industry partners, and the health of the college. I've got one additional update, Mr. President, to share with you related to tax prep provided on Lake Area Tech's campus. Just on Saturday afternoon, 15 of our students finished their run this year of preparing tax returns for free for clients in Watertown and the area. This is a service that's been provided by our financial services program for the last 35 years, and it was another popular year. This year, our students prepared 86 more returns than they did in 2023. 459 free returns were filed in service to staff members, to students, and community members around the region. So appreciate that our financial services students who are taking the accounting option went to the work to get qualified to prepare tax returns and had the chance to work with so many individuals to e-file those returns for free. A big shout-out to Lorna Hofer, one of our department leads for financial services, for carrying on this tradition and helping students. They put in four hours a day, four days a week, for six weeks in a row to provide those returns, so kudos to all of them.
Thank you. We'll move to personnel with item 4.1.1 with the retirements, please.
Thank you. Before you are the retirements that were submitted in this last month. You'll see four that were submitted. Between last month and this month, we have five retirements and just would like to note that the experience of those who are retiring this year totals 101 years of service. Just an incredible group of professionals that have served our students and our college well and wish them all well in this next phase of their journey.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the retirements?
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Retirements?
And this is kind of a special, is a fast-track instructor in our spring semester, meaning she takes semester-long courses and teaches them to our ag students in half the semester because from this point forward, students are out on internship, with the exception of a couple of online classes that she's teaching across the full semester. Haley will end her tenure with us on March 22nd, but will, has agreed to teach out those online courses through the end of the semester. So in her transition to another career, has really helped us out in making sure that those courses are covered well through the end of the semester. So I would ask, Mr. President, that you and the board would approve her resignation and not assess the penalties since she'll be teaching out the remainder of her courses.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve and waive any penalties.
Motion by Rosman.
Second.
...at Mallett Elementary. We did recently have a complete the application process. It's very simple. At the end of the screening, when the students are done, they come back to exit with a principal where we go over which qualifications they would fall under and we can answer questions that parents may have. We also go through that screening and tell them how their child did.
So what does a daily schedule look like for our four-year-olds that are going to go to our preschool? So our preschool will be five days a week and will follow the school district calendar. There will be an A.M. session and a P.M. session. The A.M. session is 8:30 to 11:30. The P.M. session is 12:20 to 3:20. The A.M. session, the students get to have breakfast because that's a skill that they have to learn. P.M. session, the students will have lunch, again, learning how to go through the lunch line, how to open a milk carton, how to get their trays, how to hold it with two hands, all those kinds of things. And then during the week, students will also get to be a part of P.E., music, art, library, recess, and purposeful play. Really, they're just at preschool, learning how to be school students.
Our preschool follows the South Dakota Early Learning Guidelines, which is similar to the South Dakota State Standards. Play-based learning is incorporated throughout their day in preschool. Daily instruction, we include all the core subject areas, math, science, reading, phonics, social studies, you name it, they do it. We also really incorporate social-emotional learning, so social skills, following instructions, how to sit on the carpet, how to sit ready. They also get second step, the second step curriculum that our school counselors provide, the preschool version, and we do that now. But they just learn simple school expectations and getting ready for school, early learning readiness.
How are parents involved in preschool? We want parents involved in preschool from, just to get started and then all the way, of course, through graduation, but we will hold parent-teacher conferences, just like with any other grade. They'll be held twice a year. Those are set on the district calendar already, so parents will know when those are ahead of time. We do standards-based report cards quarterly, so those will go home to parents following those guidelines that Shannon mentioned earlier. And then, of course, just communication throughout the year, just like any other teacher would, and through our district app, our monthly newsletters, emails, texts, phone calls, just like a teacher would communicate with any other set of parents.
We will be offering transportation. This year, we've always had, if kids ride the bus at 8 o'clock, they can get on the school bus. If they ride at 3:20, they can get on the school bus to go home. But this coming year, we're proposing that we offer transportation in the middle of the day. That was very difficult for parents, especially if they're working. So there will be an option for families that would like that dismissal time of 11:30 transportation or the arrival time at 12:20, and that will be for a monthly fee, and it is completely optional.
And then finally, we didn't want to leave out junior kindergarten. This is kind of a preschool talk, but we did want to touch on junior kindergarten because that will be at the Arrow Early Childhood Center. Don't say that too fast. Arrow Early Childhood Center. And it is different than what we've offered in the past. So in the past, like this year, we have junior kindergarten, but it's a half-day program. We are changing that for next year. Junior kindergarten will be an all-day program. Students that are eligible for junior kindergarten are kindergarten-eligible, so they're five on our before September 1st, but they might prefer to wait a year because they might have a July or August birthday. They're a younger kiddo. They're just not ready yet, those kinds of things. Junior kindergarten is also five days a week, full days following the school district calendar. And if they want to register for junior kindergarten, they need to come to the kindergarten roundup, and this is also for parents of kindergarten-age eligible students. We will have kindergarten roundup April 4th and 5th. That will be at Roosevelt. Again, if you go to our website, we have a Q.R. code and you register your students, you'll come to Roosevelt and we'll get your kiddo signed up. Short and sweet. Do you have questions for us?
Can I ask one before the board, Mr. Chair? Do you want to just distinguish, since your last slide talked about junior kindergarten, kindergarten? Just distinguish what might be the difference between the two, maybe from an academic or?
Sure. So junior kindergarten, with a full day of junior kindergarten next year, the students will participate in specials like P.E., music, art, library. They will get all those same things that kindergarten does, the purposeful playtime, recess, and meals. The curriculum is just a little different, so kindergartners are, they're just more accelerated than the junior kindergarten. Junior kindergartners, just for that year, maybe they didn't go to preschool, maybe parents decided not to go to preschool or they're just a younger, so they just need an extra year just to maybe mature or just learn their letters more, but it is similar. They're just working on getting ready for kindergarten.
Just more point of clarification. I had a parent ask me the price on junior kindergarten and I said, "I know it's free" because I had a kiddo that went there, but I don't think all people understand that.
Yes.
Junior kindergarten is free, so.
Yes.
Junior kindergarten is free.
Other questions for us?
Super excited about it. It's awesome.
We're not at all, if you can tell.
No, I'm not.
We're super excited.
You mentioned during the presentation, the fee for transportation and the tuition charge. Can you cover what that would look like?
Thank you. So the fee for the transportation, that would be that 11:30 dismissal time, between that 11:30 to that 12:20, where it might be difficult for parents. That would be a $25 flat fee per month. So that's that fee. And then the fee for tuition, for, if you were a tuition-eligible student, would be $215 per month. Just clarify that for everybody, $215 per month.
And morning and afternoon transportation would be free, just like any other student.
Exactly. Exactly. Yep.
Part of our enhancements was, we knew, like, part of our goal is to maybe reach another group of people who maybe had difficulties getting to preschool, and that's why that piece has been added. And then I just want to clarify, the number 215, that's 215. I know throughout the process, as we've been leading up to this presentation, there's been some other numbers thrown about, but the number we're bringing before the board tonight is $215 per month.
And I think, I think we would just want to clarify, we really just want all students to go to preschool. Like, we want all students to have that opportunity within Watertown, so there are some families who weren't able to attend preschool for one reason or another. We want to make sure that those opportunities are available because really what it does is it helps our students in the long run. It's an opportunity for them to learn school before hitting kindergarten where they're, in kindergarten, they're hitting the ground running and reading and adding and subtracting and it's, they're going. And so we want to make sure that all our families in Watertown have that opportunity.
And there will still be that opportunity for financial assistance for families that do qualify.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll seek a motion to approve the bills.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions or comments on the bills? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bills have been approved. We'll move to personnel for 14-4, and we'll talk about the retirement, 6.2.1.
Before you, there are six retirements this evening. I just want to thank these staff for their years of service with the school district. Many, many years represented there by those staff members, so thank you to all of them and would recommend those be approved.
Is there a motion to approve the retirements?
Make a motion to approve the retirements?
Motion by Rosman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions, comments?
Again, thank you for the years of service. There's vast number there.
Yeah, I was just going to make a quick comment, too. All retirements are, of course, important, but Kathy, Renee, and Greg in particular, I grew up with those three through Lincoln, and so it's a little surreal, approving their retirements, but here we are.
Yeah. Several with 20 and 30, three of them with 30-plus years. That's pretty incredible, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
We have our motion. We have our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Retirements have been approved. We'll move to resignations.
Before you, there's a list of resignations this evening, two additional ones from the original packet, Justine Brighardt and Maria Nai. Thank you to these staff also for their time with us and would recommend this approval.
Is there a motion to approve the resignations?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments here?
Joked with Mr. and Mrs. DeBoer, I wasn't going to approve the resignations, but I guess we'll do it anyway. So thank you, guys. And Heather, thanks for what you've done to support all the changes and being a cheerleader in the district, so really appreciate that. Good luck to you, guys.
All right, we've got our motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has been approved. We'll move to contract recommendations and addendums.
Some contract recommendations and addendums here. We did manage to find a couple of special education instructors that have been very hard to find over the past few years, but we did get two new staff there, but recommend the approval of these contracts.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the recommendations and addendums.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rosman. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. We'll move to item 6.2.4.
Yes, before you, you have a list of the K-12 administrators recommended for the 2425 school year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That list has been approved. All right, we'll move to item 6.3.1.
Perfect, that's the audit report, correct?
Yep.
All right, the 2223 audit for the district has been accepted by legislative audit. The board has been provided a copy of the report, in which I believe they all read this weekend, and the PDF version is available on the district's website. An unmodified opinion or a clean opinion was issued on the financial statements of the business-type activities in each major fund. An unmodified opinion concludes that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. As noted in previous years, a significant deficiency was disclosed due to a lack of segregation of duties. This disclosure is due to the limited staff size of the district's business office that does not allow for what would be considered complete oversight over the financial impacts of the district. The summary of auditor's results can be found on page 90 of the report. Some highlights of the report include that the district's net position increased by $14,945,412, or 15.48%, resulting in a net position of over $111 million. In fiscal year '23, total revenues surpassed $107 million and were 7.39% higher than the prior year. Expenditures in the amount of $92 million came in at 1.99% higher than the prior fiscal year. $15.4 million in federal funds were received in fiscal year 2023. The federal awards tested as major programs were the Student Financial Aid Cluster, education stabilization funding for S R for K-12 and H R for L A T C, as well as Title I in special education. The management's discussion and analysis report can be found starting on page 6 of the audit report, which provides an internal outline of the main financial impacts of the audit report and corresponding financial reports. Factors bearing on the district's financial future were noted within the district's assessed value, enrollment projections, COVID funding relief funds ending in 2024, diesel and archway expansions for L A T C, remodels for L A T C, as well as Phase II of the athletic complex. The detailed audit report is open to the public inspection during normal business hours at the business office of the school district and is also available in PDF format on the district's website and on the Department of Legislative Audit website. It is requested that the board set the 2223 audit report of the district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the audit report as presented and explained.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments?
I'll make a comment that I had the privilege of sitting in on the audit report with Ida Bailey and listened to the auditor rant and rave about how impressed they were with the school district. And I think we're in our third year now, second, third, third year with Ida Bailey. So congratulations and thank you, Emily. Thank you, Heidi, for a job well done with your limited staff.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job. You guys do wonderful, wonderful jobs. Thank you.
We have our motion. We have our second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. Item 6.3.2, authority to bid the video board install.
Yes, the district is requesting the authority to bid the installation of the athletic complex video board. We're looking at an estimated cost for work at $155,000. The funds are budgeted for in the 2324 capital outlay fund budget.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Move to item 6.3.3, authority to bid the moving service.
Yes, the district requests the authority to bid moving service for the restructure of the elementary buildings at an estimated cost for work at $90,000. The funds are set aside in the five-year capital outlay fund plan under fiscal year 2425. So we would be looking at service for July of 2024.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move the authority to bid the moving service.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments on this?
Are they providing packaging?
No, that would be, that would be separate. In terms of packaging that we're purchasing or the labor for packaging.
You're talking about boxes.
Yeah. The boxes would be separate. This would be for the man-owners to get the boxes from one area to the next. We are completely shifting Roosevelt, that shifting into another building. McKinley, for the most part, is shifting because it becomes a pre-K building and then kindergarten building shifting as well to the McKinley building. So it's quite a few classrooms, probably one of the biggest movings that we've ever had within the district, so it's going to be quite the process.
Lot of logistics.
Yeah.
And this would be for the moving across from building to building? There may still be some internal moving. That would be our staff. And as far as the staff goes, they would be packing, not, like, our staff would be packing, not the hauling. That's really what we're paying for, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, we've got our first and second. Let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has been approved. Item 6.3.4, consider Consider the Sourcewell.
Yes. The district requests the authority to accept the Sourcewell bid from My Turn Play Systems in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, thirty-three dollars for playground equipment at the Arrow Early Childhood Center located at McKinley. These funds are set aside in the five-year capital outlay fund under the, under the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to considering a lease agreement in item six point, three point five.
Yes. The district recommends accepting the lease agreement with Rising Star Athletics for gymnastics space in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars per year. The agreement term is for five years with the ability to auto-renew with updated terms to be negotiated. So our first lease would take place, that agreement purchase price would take place in next fiscal year's budget.
Heidi, I'm sorry, can you repeat the amount I?
Twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars per year.
Okay. And that would start next?
July one.
Yep. That would start July. That would be the terms of that payment.
Perfect. All right. Is there a motion?
I move approve the lease agreement as explained and presented.
Motion by Moulton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to second reading of policies, six point, four point one, the JC School Attendance Area.
Yes. Thank you. This is a second reading. We, we brought these forward. These are the, the school attendance area policies. JC is kind of the written summary of our policy and a reminder that we added the caveat about a minimum of every five years that we would relook at the boundaries. So there were really no changes from this last month to this month. And then, if you want to vote on that, or I can explain, since they're kind of tied together, if you want to explain the attendance boundaries first, but JC is more of just the overarching policy. Or I can talk about the attendance boundaries, which is JCA.
Should we just vote on that first one then, real quick?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor are seeking a motion for JC School Attendance Area, please?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item has been approved. Now we'll go to the boundaries.
Okay. Mr. Vargas? So these were the new boundaries established through Co-op. Mr. Vargas, did we change that area around by the lake?
Yep. I can talk through that.
You want to talk through that one?
So this area, it is north of two twelve. This would be between like the Sandy Shores area up to Cattail Crossing. So initially, this line follows what the city has for the city boundary, more or less, and so that's what that line followed. Really, for school attendants, it doesn't really look that clean for us. And so what the change would be on the map would be that this line would actually follow South Lake Drive around the lake, back up towards like the prop, continue over to this county road that is out in front of kind of the country club area that cuts across and goes towards Derby Downs. That's where that line would then connect back with, I think it's Forty-second Street here that goes past Cattail Crossing. That's where that line would then connect and go back down towards two twelve. So essentially, this jagged area through the south part of this boundary line here would follow South Lake Drive and then continue on this county road that goes past Cattail Crossing, then back down to Highway two twelve.
So there really isn't a change. It's still Mallett. It's just more following where the housing actually is right now versus the city limit boundary. Is that the simplified?
Yeah. I would, yep.
We did receive one comment about the Mallett section, and so if you remember from the presentation last week, Co-op was looking at how to balance the number of sections, so four, four, three, four Jefferson, four Lincoln, three Mallett. And so they based it off of percentages of students in there. So it went from five to three with Mallett kind of, kind of being the center and Jefferson and Lincoln surrounding it. We had a comment about, you know, maybe making it more of an up and down with Mallett or coming down further. We did talk about that with Jason with regards to the fact that, you know, if you're coming from down in this area, you would drive, you know, you'd go past Mallett up to Jefferson, and I think the thought was, you know, our buses are going to follow those main roads, so once you end up on a bus, you're not physically driving by Mallett. So the idea was, you know, you're probably taking Highway twenty up or Highway eighty-one up, and I guess the mental piece of not literally driving by an elementary school. And when Co-op did it, it was formed more to get the percentages, and that's how it kind of, you know, it stayed more of the whole of the donut versus coming down further.
Well, and if I remember right, because I got that question as well, when I went and pulled up last month's meeting to see those maps that Jason showed us, and the density of the students near Mallett, like, if you would shift that, it, it, it's going to end up in an area more that's less populated, actually, and then you'd be messing again with numbers and, yep. It just made sense there.
So it was discussed, you know, because we had looked at, you know, whether you came up and down, and I made fun of myself enough, but I was making this kind of motion through thinking we might have to have these diagonal stripes. And what he really focused on, I guess I call it the heat map of the concentration of students. It made sense. This made more sense, I guess, than at least what I went into it thinking it might look like, based off of his percentages. And the one piece is, you know, we say a minimum of every five years. Obviously, we're going to fill it, and for a year, all of the kindergarten would go to McKinley, so really, it's more where are the first graders going? I know, you know, at least in part, this is how we would help, you know, place students, but we still will have limited options for intra-district open enrollment if we need it to try and make sure we have the right amount of sections at each of the schools. So I guess our recommendation is to stick with this proposal.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approve of JCA as explained and updated.
Motion by Moulton.
Second.
Second by Iverson. Questions, comments? Well, like, a lot of things, we're just trying to make the best decision possible with the information, the tools, and the data that we have available. You know, you could look at the map and you see, okay, it just kind of looks kind of funky when you, you know, the three stripes makes a lot of sense, but when you get into it with the percentages, that also makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad that he provided that. And I think the board has also concluded that we didn't really receive a whole lot of feedback to the contrary either, so.
And I understand the difficult piece in maybe providing feedback is, it's probably very singular. If, if someone were wanting to do it, you know, it might focus on their spot versus, you know, it's hard for an individual to maybe try and plot out how you would make some of the changes. So I, I understand it's some, it might be a difficult thing to comment on as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. We'll move to item six point five, the request for proposal for the EAP.
You have before you, so we offer through our health plan, our employee assistance program, which allows for three visits, counseling visits, and currently, we have utilized HSA, the Human Service Agency was, this was the spring of twenty-twenty, when we entered in an agreement with them for this, and we do, we go out and see quotes on this every so often, and so this would be for the net, another, for be, for a three-year period from July one, twenty-twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, that we would seek quotes on this.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the request for the EAP program.
Motion by Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rosman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. I don't see we have any open enrollment requests. Is that correct?
No open enrollments this month. And then one thirteen twenty-eight ten.
And we'll seek a motion for approval of that, please.
Take a motion to approve the thirteen twenty-eight ten?
Motion by Rosman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. We'll turn it over to you, Dr. Danison.
Yes. Thanks to our presenters on the McKinley Arrow Early Childhood Center. A reminder that our last preschool screening date is Friday, March twenty-second. You can call, is that the Mallett number you have there, six three nine eight? That, oh, that's, that's actually Special Services Office, eight eight two six three nine eight, if you need an appointment for March twenty-second. And then we have kindergarten roundup on Thursday, April fourth, Friday, April fifth. So bring them on in. And as noted in the presentation, junior kindergarten was part of that. We are excited. Tomorrow is the Bisco BBQ, fourth floor, Lake Area, eleven thirty AM. We have one of our own, an alumnus of Watertown High School, Erica Peterson-Mount, and the founder of Nerdy Nuts. Your ticket also gets you some samples of Nerdy Nuts, so join us for Bisco BBQ tomorrow, March twelfth, eleven thirty AM, fourth floor, Lake Area. And then a reminder to all of our families, we have our spring break this week on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, no school.
Do we need to do anything on the seven point one five, the school board election at all?
Heidi, I'll talk about that.
Yes, I have notation on that. We currently have two terms that will expire at the end of this year, so we have a three-year term for Carrie Lor and a three-year term for John Iverson, and I'll have them note if they're comfortable noting whether they plan to run or not for the future spot. The circulation of nominating petitions may begin on Tuesday, April ninth, and those petitions may be filed in our office. And the timeline for that would then be Friday, May tenth, at five PM. If they're comfortable noting their continuation, or I may have put them on the spot and they don't want to answer.
Well, I will just go ahead and continue on then. You guys want to jump in?
I, I plan to run again.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Awkward.
Okay. All right. We're good. All right. Moving on. Seven point two, Board Report to Superintendent. Happy early birthday to Dr. Danison. It's on the thirteenth, in case you forgot. Need your reminder.
Never be worse than twenty-twenty's birthday when the world shut down, so.
Oh, yeah.
Friday the thirteenth.
Wow.